Here we go. This open meeting of the Men and Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 24, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting, ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Men and Select Board is convening by telephone conference as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Okay?
All right. Just a reminder that if you're not speaking, please mute yourself, and because we are doing about participation, all votes will be done by roll call vote. Just giving it one minute so I can officially start the meeting. Okay. So first thing we're going to do is the public hearing. So I will read the announcement. The Men and Select Board, Land Use Committee, and Community Preservation Committee hereby give notice that there will be a public hearing March 16, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. at a remote meeting. Details for access to the meeting can be found at www.mendenma.gov/SelectBoard to receive comments on the five-year land use program, copies of which can be found at www.mendenma.gov or the Town Clerk's Office. And to hear suggestions for Community Preservation Act-funded projects. For questions, email communitypreservation@mendenma.gov. Take a motion to open the meeting.
I move to open the land use five-year plan public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Rock, aye.
Real aye. Okay. Anne, do you want to lead us through this?
Well, it's just, you know, at the Town Clerks and on the website, like you said, we had our goals for the land use plan, which haven't changed for like 10 years. So, and then also it's open for suggestions for the community preservation spending of that money. So I don't know if anyone on here has questions or...
You didn't receive any emails to that address?
No, I don't think so.
All right, and Laura, did you receive anything on this?
I did not, no.
Okay. There any members of the public who are on the meeting that would like to speak to us?
Mark.
Oh, Dan, go ahead.
Just, just so, we don't have to get into it now, but I know I've had several conversations with various youth sports about options for the parks, and that's certainly stuff we will bring forward to the CPC Commission, but I'll just mention it tonight since it's at the hearing.
Very good. There's always something there.
And we're also working on the updated open space and recreation plan, Dan and I, and CMRPC. So that's something that we would include in the plan.
Great. Okay, Chris, do you have any comments on this?
No comments on my part.
All right, Kim, anything? Okay.
Hi, Elena.
Take a motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the land use five-year plan public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Rock, aye.
Real aye. Okay. Go ahead, yep.
As I say, I move to approve the land use five-year plan as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Rock, aye.
Real aye. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm just going to go back up citizens' statements and petitions. Is there anyone on for that? No. Correspondence to the board? Nothing. Right. Consider appointment for part-time council on aging outreach coordinator.
So I move to appoint Janet Utner to the part-time position of outreach coordinator, administrative assistant for the Council of Aging, up to 18 hours per week at a rate of $19.80 per hour.
Second. Kim, did you want to talk to this?
Sure. So we had a resignation in the outreach coordinator position a couple of months back. So I met with Amy and we discussed what her needs really were within the organization, and she had discussed adding a couple of more complex skills to the position, something more aligned with what the admin is doing now, and that this position is already partially grant-funded. And so we decided to reclassify the position as an admin-coordinated outreach worker and re-advertise. And we did, the hours are the same, the pay rate is slightly higher, but within the budget. We advertised and we received a highly qualified candidate who came back into the position, and we're happy to bring her back aboard.
I was going to say, she's worked at the Council on Aging in the past, right?
Correct. She was the previous outreach worker and actually was looking for something that was more of a challenge. And, you know, obviously, we don't just create positions based upon want. There has to be a need. And I had spoken to Amy about potentially, you know, really analyzing what she needed in the organization before we just hired another outreach worker. And it just so happened when we sort of amped up the qualifications and the skill sets that this person decided that they were interested again, and they came back. And so it worked out.
Great. Okay. All in favor?
Rock, aye.
Real aye. Welcome back, Janet.
Yeah. It's a great, it's a great addition and retention, really.
Definitely. Okay. Appointment for registrar.
So I move to appoint Paul Pond as a registrar for a term to expire 3/31/24.
Second. I don't really feel like there's a need to discuss this. Chris, you good?
I'm good.
All in favor?
Rock, aye.
Real aye. Okay, consider BBT vacancy.
So I move to place the BBT vacancy on the annual town election ballot.
Second. Again, I think it's pretty straightforward. All in favor?
Rock, aye.
Real aye. Okay, budget.
Yay. Maybe I can screen share and make our lives easier. Just hold on, let me close everything out first before you give me permission. Nobody wants to see my crazy spreadsheet. Okay, I can't get this to close. One more thing. Okay, well, Mark, why don't you talk a little bit about where we are with the budget with the school while I pull this up, just so Chris can recap?
So at our last meeting, Chris, we discussed the funding for the school, and we decided to leave it level funded to last year's number. So that gives them a net increase of about, what is it, Kim, $44,000?
Yeah, it was $44,000.
Okay. So we just received a correspondence from the school committee certifying their budget. Looks like about a million over our last year's number. Kim, is that what you saw?
Yes.
So based on that, we will be going for an override.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, good.
Let me know when you can see it. Yes?
Yep.
All right, great. I know we went through this budget once already. I've only met with the FinCom once, they're meeting again tomorrow. We are sort of running out of days, as you know. We don't need to publish a budget in with the warrant and close it this week, but we do need to have a public hearing on the budget, which will be in a couple of weeks. So before I go through, I know there's a lot of changes coming down the pipe with this ARPA money, and the town will receive something, but unfortunately, we're not going to receive any of that or know about it within the deadline for us really certifying a budget that we need. We can amend it later, once we certify one, but for now, we just need to get a basic budget approved over to the FinCom and then a hearing on it so that we can meet the requirements for town meeting.
Well, and I don't think that our budget should be based on those funds in any way.
Correct. It's one-time money and, you know, it's, but I know a lot of conversation will come around that. They'll assume, as I'm about to describe, how we don't have any money. But I'll just go through this very quickly. You can stop me anywhere along the way, but I'll just keep going down. So the moderator, there's $100 in there, as you know, the moderator is changing. Selectmen, that's the same. There's $4,000 in here. There's an increase, a $500 increase to the premium for the audit. And then there's, I adjusted the insurance premium increase to match the actuals from previous years. It's about $3,000. The premiums are what we pay when we have an accident or something, and we typically go over. So that's the number there. The Finance Committee, right now, as in previous years, I'm using this reserve for general expenses, which is the FinCom reserve as our balancer in our budget. So let's see how it's an odd number. That's because I'm putting whatever excess money is in there at the end. Our budget reserve for negotiations, there's an increase of $40,000 I've put in there. That's for any type of contract negotiation that we have coming up this year. That includes all of the union contracts we have, but any other contracts that we have as well. So that number is small considering the amount of things we are about to renegotiate in this next year, but I think it's sufficient. Here in the accounting payroll section, as you know, we are working to hire a finance director, and hopefully they will be on board next month. And along with that comes the redesign of the department into one finance department. I have moved accounting and payroll, as you can see, from here down here into the finance department budget, which was the previous treasurer-collector. And I've broken out this number down here so everyone can see exactly what is in this number. So salaries is a straightforward. Then in the expenses, there's a $70,000 increase here, and here's that 70,000. About 44,000 of it is for accounting, 7,000 or so is for Harper's, which is the payroll. And then there's another 10,000 in there for coverage, training, and transition to the finance department with outside firms that we may or may not need depending on circumstance. But in previous year, we've budgeted that as staff coverage. I'm just putting it here, and it has been in salaries. I'm putting it in contractual because that's more likely where it would go. I had some questions at FinCom, so I'll hit them very quickly here because I know it may come up. People wanted to know what this means. How did we get here? What is all of this about? Just very quickly, if you take a look at this top line, this is the town accountant's budget from FY14 to FY22. This bottom line here is the total amount that we paid in that department for that particular thing over the years. Okay, it's pretty straightforward. So for this FY22, we would have been paying about $60,000 for the current, the outsourcing that we're doing, which is still substantially less than what we paid when we did it in-house. The next section is about the treasurer-collector and how that affects that department. This is what the budget would have been if we had just moved forward with not doing any consolidation. So you combine those two numbers, that's about $229. This is the total cost for the finance department this year. So we're saving about $20,000 by making the transition, even though we've done some staffing changes. The savings could potentially be more, once we actually know what needs there are and the finance director has within that department. And like I said, that $10,000 for training and whatever could probably come off for FY23, so the savings will be closer to $30,000. If anyone asks about that, we've got that available. I know there's a lot of interest. Legal is the same, AD, the town clerk, we talked about this before. I met with Ellen. We all know she's done a terrific job this past year with the election, there's no question. She would like to go to the floor and ask for an increase. I met with her. I think I'm recommending a slightly different number than the one that she would like. I think this number falls in line with the middle of the range, about where I think her qualifications and her skill have put her. And I put it in here for your support on the floor. Of course, that's completely up to you, whether you want to do that or not, or you want her to go on her own, but this is my recommendation to you. Elections and registrar, that's dropped obviously because of the elections. So this past week or so, there's a slight change here. You can, we have the possibility to potentially hire a conservation agent. I've been working with the Concom and with Upton and Northbridge about the possibility of changing the Concom admin position to a conservation agent. And the change in the cost of increase for that is about $5,800. It's still in exploration stages, but I put it here just in case. Having spoken to Damon, I think this is the direction we want to go in. I mean, we've talked about it for a number of years. If there's an opportunity there to share a resource, I certainly want to look at it, as we always do. Planning Board, you can see the money here is increased for the shared planner. Just an update on that, we are actually interviewing this week for that position, so we will have somebody on board within another month or so. And we, just as a reminder, we, 16 hours for us, 18 hours for Oxbridge, and six hours for Millville. Zoning is straightforward, land use straightforward, town hall salaries. There's nothing in there because everything is in reserve, right? So one thing that's new that's in here that we didn't talk about last time, because it wasn't finalized, is this, we've been talking for a couple of years about doing a new chart of accounts. That's about to happen. It's going to happen July 1. We've expedited, Eric and I have been working with the vendor, and we're able to move the timeline up. So the transition, right now, I'm budgeting $15,000 to do this transition to this new cloud-based KBS. I actually think it's going to be much less than that, but I haven't received the quote back yet. Some of the money from computer maintenance contracts will drop, obviously, because the old KBS will go. And so this is the maximum amount that I think that it could impact us annually, this 15. Obviously, we're very excited about that. We're going to go with the KBS. It's exactly the same as it is, so it should be the easiest for the staff to transition to. It's just that it's going to be cloud-based rather than on machines. And so it's going to be, we're really, we're very excited. It's going to start July 1. Police Department, there's nothing there. Fire Department, Bill is on, he can speak to that. Bill, you want to talk about it?
I just wanted to make sure that we didn't lose my suggestion to add a seventh person, to have two career people on 7/24, and doing that within the recommended dollar amount for the fire department.
The 1129962.
Sorry. Yes, that's correct.
Yes, I did not alter your budget at all, since no decision had been made after the last one, and I've left everything as is.
Okay. Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and I've given the board all kind, you know, the details behind that. I understand that there's a lot going on, and especially with the schools, but I just, I don't want to lose track of this, if there's a possibility, again, staying within that recommended budget of doing that.
Okay.
Yep.
Leaving up now. I also want to highlight just quickly, since we're going down, you can see the $77,000 at the bottom. This is the approved ambulance lease and the capital replacement cost for equipment and vehicles in the department, much similar to cruiser replacement, right? This is the same type of line I'm trying to create for highway, but this was approved last budget cycle, and now we got to pay for it. Building inspector is the same, gas inspector, plumbing inspector. Down, 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 down. Dispatch, we talked about this a little bit before. I had my call with the Meta Board last week. It does look like we're on track, right? July 1, Bill, nod your head. Yes, July 1.
Yeah, that's the latest we've been given.
Yep, so at this time, we're still budgeting six months worth of dispatch, just in case. So that's, we'll see the reduction of half. So next year, we'll see the reduction in whole, and that should be excellent next budget year. Here's the school, as we talked about. I highlighted this to make it easier for everybody. This 106884 is the approved number from last year, of which 271,820 is the override. So it's clear. This is their requested amount, updated as of this afternoon from what Jay sent over. This, right here, 106884 is what we're recommending, okay? So you can see, it's actually a little bit more, because last year, they got more money for debt service. I put that additional money in their operational additional. So they're actually getting, they're taking less in debt and getting more in operating. So when they're saying they're not getting anything, they're getting a little something. So that's the number there. BBT's number is in, this is the actual, it's down 15,000 from the year before, which is great. Let me slide on down. Highway.
So, I'm sorry.
Yep.
So BBT is giving money back essentially.
Yeah, second year, two years in a row. Yeah. This highway, following the board's goals of trying to put more money into road improvements, I put a little note here, BOs focused on road improvements. I put 15 in road materials, and I put another 10 in hired equipment, okay? And the same thing I want to highlight down here, you can see it's in yellow, but this is the capital equipment replacement that I was talking about. Alan has about $1,050,000 in equipment. You know, you divide that by 10 years, and that's 105. We really should be budgeting every year for replacement towards his stuff. We don't budget anything. Right now, I've put in half of that, 56.5. We'll see if it lives. But even half would be great, if we could work towards maybe paying half from operating and half from capital, would go a long way to getting us where we need to be with equipment. Snow and ice is pretty straightforward. Water is pretty straightforward. Border Health, there's some changes here. They have, all the details are here. The contracts are up, they had to add additional money for additional coverage. We're covering all of that. I am covering what I can over there with CARES money as well, when we can. Amy's added some classes for her admin. Going down. Straightforward. I'm just going to point out here, on debt, this is, this is a slight reduction of about $15,000 here. I'm just budgeting them in the correct lines. Then over here, this is what killed us, right? We got hit by Worcester County for a 16% increase, $111,000, a bunch of young retirees. You know, that's, we got whacked. But on the upside, I don't have the numbers on workers' compensation yet, but that's always an estimate, I feel pretty good about that. But this health insurance number, because we locked in, right, last year at less, at 2% or more, we have a reduction this year in health insurance, which is not something that you're going to see probably again ever, but it's, you know, every little bit helps, and so here we are. We might even be able to, this is the actual, I got the number last week. We might be able to reduce a little bit more based upon hiring, obviously. I always budget middle-of-the-range, full-family package for hirers, and if they don't need it, then obviously we can save a little there. Property and county is up. We have a bunch of things we bought last year that need insurance coverage. And keep going. That brings us down here very quickly. So the summary is this, $469,000, okay? Of which, down here, 370, 380,000 of that is all of these budget drivers, and that gave us this 123, basically, plus or minus of things that we added. And so this is the adds, the optional adds of things, okay?
Yeah.
And that's the story with the budget. We are balanced, like I said, FinCom meets tomorrow. They'll probably meet again the following Wednesday, and then there'll be a hearing in April. So if you're, have some questions or you want changes, now is the time so we can vote on a budget to move forward with FinCom, a BOs budget. That was my quickest, how long did it take? That was my quickest.
It was good.
Thank you. But if you have any questions before I shut it off, you want to see anything else? No? Okay.
Chris?
I have a question, I don't know.
Sure. Yeah.
You might have gone by this very quickly, but did you include a, like 10 hours for the conservation agent?
I did.
Okay.
If I could just jump in real fast?
Yep.
Go right ahead.
I just wanted to point out that on the department request at 7, full-time firefighter show, and a request of $58,000, that was from the initial, that was before I started working through the options and not setting what we're currently paying to fill that with per diem and part-time people. So just to reiterate, that would be a zero there.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you see me now or the screen? Which thing can you say?
They'll see the screen.
Oh, okay, because I can see you guys, hold on.
So, do you need a vote on this, Kim?
Yeah, that would be good, because if it's a BOs-approved budget, then it goes to FinCom tomorrow as the BOs-approved budget.
Okay, I'll take a motion on the budget as presented.
So moved.
Second. Oh, Bonnie's here. All right. All in favor?
Rock, aye.
Can you, aye. Real aye. Very good.
All right, thanks, everybody. You know, as usual, strange budget year, but we're getting through it. If you have more questions, or if somebody asks you a question, or they hear something, just text me or call me, and, you know, I've got the data, so we can back it up.
Okay, Kim, do you want to jump right into the warrant?
Oh, I'd love to. Where is it? Hold on, I got to pull it up.
Yeah, me too. Actually.
Got it. Warrant. Okay, this one probably isn't, Cindy, you can just tell me along the way if it's different, if you made changes and I don't know about it, okay?
Certainly. Most of the changes I made, I sent along to Laura, and they were really non-substantive at this point.
I think, I saw that email, let me pull it up.
They really were just making it all the same.
Good. Okay.
A couple I might have had a few questions on, like vague, what do you mean?
Okay.
But we'll get those.
Hmm, oh man, now which one is it? This one?
It came around three this afternoon.
Yep, can you see it?
Yep.
Okay. You know what Article 1 is. Need to have enough money, right? And then we do the salaries, elected official, these are all consent, hopefully bills of a prior year. This one is...
Is five? The override?
Yeah.
Okay.
Answer, hold on. You know, like from a village to free cross, technically, yeah, that's fine, that means we can, yep. Then the override, then this is consent calendar, assessor, update valuation consent, police department grant consent. This regional substance abuse is consent, chapter 90, consent calendar. 11, water enterprise fund. These are all the revolving accounts with their limits, one of which we missed last year, we won't miss again. Stabilization, whatever we're going to put in there, CapEx, whatever we're going to put in there, OPEB, whatever we're going to put in there, five-year land use that Anne just did, affordable housing coordinator position. This one is the police station debt, we combined that into two, Anne, FYI. That was just that one article now, instead of the two that it was. Fino.
Yep.
Should be the last year for Fino. And then this one, stormwater, this one is from Alan, stormwater change we got to make. This one is, this one's yours, Anne, cemeteries, I think we talked about that already. This is, we talked about this in the fall, right?
Yes, the two articles will be one article, which I sent to Laura.
Okay, great. Town beach, same thing from the fall, right? Land bank survey, was this on the fall? I don't remember this.
Uh, yes.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. This one is, is six, land use, this is you, Anne, 26. Housekeeping.
That's, yeah, it's stormwater stuff that was on the fall.
Yeah, okay. So Article 27 is the overlay district for the corner of 15, 16, that Jack Hunter has been working on. For this one, the board, it's actually a planning board article, so the board basically takes it from this point and then sends it to planning to approve and do the work on and do the hearing on, okay? So it's a little bit reversed because an outside agency prepared the bylaw, but that's, the board says yes, and then we send it over there, okay? Meta Borough Estates, all right, it's pretty straightforward. What is this one? Pond Street.
Pond Street. That's over behind, behind George Street, right? Is that new development back there?
Can I?
Yeah.
On the Pond Street one where they're trying to buy the land, I just, I don't know how the wording should be, like Cindy will have to figure that out, but there's a lot of things they need to do, and we need to, like, include it in the warrant article if we can. Like, they need to replace the land that they're taking. There's a whole process, it's Article 97, land, open space, so they've got to go through this whole process of getting the right votes, two-thirds of the state senate. Because if we don't file, if MENA doesn't follow that, then when we're writing grants, we're not going to be able, we're not going to be able to apply for grants, grant money. And they need to pay us back for costs that we're incurring for their mistake, and a comment needs to be paid back because they have to redo the conservation restriction, the baseline survey. They need to put, mark the boundaries with monumentation that the planning board decides. And then also, part of it's in national heritage and endangered species habitat, and so they need to resolve that with national heritage. So I'm just saying, it's complicated and I want to make sure that we include all this. And I'm not very comfortable with having the acceptance of the road in the next article because they need to follow through with all this other stuff before, I think we should accept the road, but.
Yeah. Cindy, you've been working on this?
Oh, you're muted, Cindy.
I, um, I spoke with Suzette, I believe it is, and it is a very complicated situation because from the town's perspective, looking at Article 27, we have land that's in Article 97, which is protected land, so we need to get permission from, to, from the town to file special legislation to take it out. The state, however, will not let us do that unless we have equal to or more land to put back in. And as I understand it, Pond Meadow Estates is going to be purchasing or providing the land that we will be using to swap this out. So all the, we don't have all the missing pieces to go forward, but we have enough to get authorization to seek special legislation to swap this land for other Article 97 land. And, you know, you can have town meeting, say, to be funded by Pond Meadows. I also think we would need or want a memorandum of understanding with them, because all of these pieces will not be in place, as Ann said. And in terms of why Ann's weary of having the road released or accepted right now is because then, you know, it's yours and you don't really have anything over their heads.
Yeah, I would agree that. I don't think that should be done until this is settled.
Correct. I, I am not necessarily optimistic that enough of the ducks are going to be to row for the swap and the Article 97 for this town meeting.
No.
But that doesn't mean you can't get authorization to go forward on the process, but I personally find it better from a town's perspective when you know what the replacement land is looking like.
Right.
Just so you have a better sense of, you know, how you feel about it. So I would not be surprised if this article was not ready to go forward. That being said, you never know.
Right. So, I would say, other members can speak up, but I would say no to the, even putting the Pond Street acceptance on this warrant.
I would agree. I don't, I don't see that being done. We can always do that at the next special.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so can note that.
Okay.
All right, continue.
Article 30, I think Elaine is here for, this is taxation aid.
Yes, would you like me to talk about this briefly?
Yeah, if you want to give a summary, yeah, that'd be great.
So I just, I am the chair of the Tax Aid Committee, which, as you know, was created to explore options for tax aid, especially for senior, senior citizens, but also for disabled homeowners in Mendon. And we have been, over the last few years, administering the Tax Aid Fund, which is a, a donation-based fund, but we have identified this other opportunity for tax aid for senior citizens. And Kevin Rudden is also here, who has been doing a lot of research in this area, so I wondered if he could present about this.
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay, basically, this is what's called a means-tested tax exemption. And the purpose of this article is to have the town request the select board to ask the general court to enact special legislation enrolling Mendon to offer this exemption. And there is a note at the bottom of the wording that was left in, and it's really meant for the town council. We're having the exact wording of two other towns, with the exception of we changed the word selectmen to select board and changed, obviously, the town to Mendon, that's already been passed by the general court. So the language is, is pretty much set. What this would do if passed is allow people who have received the senior, what's called circuit breaker income tax exemption, to apply for another exemption from the town. And based on the amount of the state circuit breaker credit, each year, the assessors would tell you how many people have applied and what the total amount eligible for, and then the select board would decide what percentage of the tax credit to offer is the exemption on a scale from 50% to 200%. And basically, your decision would be guided by assessors and the amount involved. And then, much like the way the senior discount on the trash fee is spread among the rest of the users, this exemption would be spread amongst all homeowners on the tax rate. And the reason why it's done this way is normally you would appropriate that money into the assessor's overlay account for the exemption, but quite honestly, that, because that's an appropriation, reduces the amount available to fund town services under the two-and-a-half cap. By spreading it across the tax rate, it does not affect the town's ability to fund the needed services. And it would give the taxpayers a true cost of funding this program every year. In return of the taxpayers, after initially asking for the legislation, every three years would decide to renew this at town meeting. So if it's tried for two or three years and people don't like it, they don't have to renew it, but it does offer a rather decent exemption for people. The highest exemption a senior right now can get is $1,000. This would, would at least, if somebody qualified at 100%, would offer them another, at last year's circuit breaker rate, 1,150. And when you put the two together, you know, if somebody has a property tax bill of 4,000 or 5,000 a year, which is, by the way, the average tax bill for seniors currently getting the senior exemption, being able to knock half of that off is a really good opportunity to help them. So that's the purpose behind this.
Great, well, it sounds like a really unique situation and there are, there's not too many towns around that are doing that, but there are some local communities.
There are 12, there are 12 communities in the state now doing it. The closest one is Hopkinton. This is a duplicate of Hopkinton's. Hopkinton is now in their third successful year of doing it. And it works very well. I've been in, working with the, the principal assessor in Hopkinton on this for the last two years to see how it progressed over there. But it's something the Taxation Aid Committee actually brought up four years ago, when other towns were doing it. The, the problem candidly is each town in the beginning did its own version and they were unworkable year to year. The, the method that Hopkinton and Concord have that we're advocating here is actually a very predictable and easy way to do it every year. And it actually results in, the seniors would apply, just like any other exemption, the select board would have one more vote a year, and the assessors would have one more exemption to administer. And the rest of it is done when the tax rate is set. So it's fairly easy to apply for and administer.
Great. Cindy, have you seen this in any communities that you work in? You're muted. Cindy, you're muted. Oh, Cindy.
You can't expect to do all the technology right in one meeting. I have not seen this particular article go before any of my towns, but I did look at Hopkinton and this does seem to mirror it.
It's identical, Cindy. With the exception of their sit-board of selectmen, we changed it to select board, their sit-ten of Hopkinton. And by the way, I also ran it by the head lawyer at the Department of Revenue last week. And because it's already gone through all the legal counsel at the state house level, and she's familiar with it, she said, she blessed it as well. I have emailed from her that I could forward to you, explaining her thoughts on it, but she has no issue with it either.
That would be great. To me, it's really more of a policy decision than a legal issue for the town at this point, whether it's something the town wants to offer. I think one of the most unique features about it is, you know, you sort of get a chance to try it out and if you don't like it, get rid of it.
Well.
Easily.
The good part, the good part of that is, again, it's just that part, Cindy, that you can try it out for three years and if the people don't like it, you get rid of it by not voting for it again. You just don't put it on the warrant, it dies. If they do like it, every, every fourth year, you put it on the warrant to renew it.
Right. Okay, Ann, did you have a question or comment on this? No, her hand's up. All right, Chris or Lonnie, do you have any comments on this?
I'm good.
Oh, I feel like it's something that the voters should decide, so I'm good with it. Ann, go ahead, Ann. No? Okay, I don't know why. Okay.
Okay, I'll have, if I could just, I'll have somebody forward that email to Cindy because I don't have her email.
Yep, that's cool. Thank you, Kevin.
All right.
All right, Kim, continue.
Article 31. Alan says he needs an additional $20,000 for the tree warden budget.
Where is that going to come from?
Free cash, I guess. We haven't done any financial stuff yet, this, right? That's going to FinCom next. He also still is asking for that trackless sidewalk machine. He needs to replace a truck in the highway department, and he needs radios.
Okay.
That's the story. Right, can't tell you more.
Cindy has her hand up.
The only thing I would say is, I, I think it would be helpful if a little more specificity could be given to the description of trackless machine.
I, I will, I will, once I get a little more detail, hopefully tomorrow night at FinCom. I don't know personally how it's feasible that we're going to fund these things anyway, but, you know, we leave the FinCom to decide funding sources, right? So hopefully, he's going to present to FinCom and I can write the detail in before the end of the week.
Do you happen to know, and it's not really relevant to anything here, if these are additional items to his fleet or replacement items?
The trackless is new, the trick, the truck is a replacement, the radios are a replacement, and what's the other thing? Something else. But, oh, tree warden money, so that's, that's just supplement for his budget. We could either, we actually could probably handle that in a year-end transfer if we wanted to.
All right. So any comments from the board on what we've seen? If not, we'll accept a motion.
Has a question, sorry.
Oh.
Sorry.
Ooh.
Yeah, I, I have six more items, which I sent to Laura because it's due Thursday, so if you want me to tell you what they are, they're not that big deals. I mean, one's a, should I tell you what they are?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so one's a fund transfer, it's with the land bank. One is, that is important, that for 52 Providence Street, where we're trying to put affordable housing on 3.2 acres, we need to have a vote to, it's, it's, the wording is like to convey it to be able to use as affordable housing, like we'll have better wording for it, but it's to allow us to move forward and then any final decision, the select board would, you know, it would be at their discretion. And then also.
One second. Cindy, go ahead.
Is this general municipal purpose land?
It is CPA land, so it has to be used for those categories, and it's, it's actually a 72-acre piece and it's just this three acre we're trying to get affordable housing on, but that's like the next, next step in the process, so. And then there are some changes in the open space communities by law, just tightening it up, but kind of housekeeping stuff. I am requesting some more, the land use committee is requesting money from the land bank to do some surveying along the open space on George Street and some of the property owners, just so we can define that border, because there's been some encroachment. And we're trying to do this in a lot of the open space properties to have, you know, physical monumentation. And then also, the historical commission has some documents that they want to preserve, so that CPA money. And then I think, Dan, I think the historical commission has some other articles. They have changes or additions to the scenic roads by law and the demolition delay.
Were you putting, were you putting an article on for the town hall paint or am I doing that? Okay.
I thought we were going to wait on that because with all the construction and, you know, fixing up the lot, that really should kind of.
Wait, but it, it won't be till next spring. I mean, if possible, I'd like to put the money aside. What, Mark, you're shaking your head? What?
I, we, we have to do it this year.
Okay, so we'll add that article and then when we go through the financials, I'll see what's, what with free cash and whatever, we'll come back and decide what the priorities are once I, once we have that. I'll add it.
So there's still outstanding articles, but we're voting to approve it without seeing all of the articles?
I, yes, because we have to have the warrant finalized by Saturday. So what I was going to have your vote be tonight, pending town administrator and town council approval, right? I'm not going to add any more articles beyond what you've just heard, okay? So if anything, there'll just be wording changes or the removal of the stuff like we've talked about. And then I'll send it to you guys again before Saturday. You can look it over and it should be good to go.
Dan, hand a, hand up.
Yes, Ann just mentioned this. So the historic commission is submitting the two bylaw revisions that we had discussed previously, which is the update to scenic roads and update to demolition delay. I think I sent them to Laura today and that's what had gotten pushed off the previous meetings.
Okay, so I have a quick question about the demolition delay. Is that the one to extend this to a year?
So that's part of it, and that's certainly something that could be amended on the floor, but that is part of our proposal.
Okay, all right. So I only asked that.
Yeah.
When, I had asked to be notified when you were going to discuss that. I don't get a chance to just look at every agenda at all times. I really now am, feel even more slighted that I didn't get a chance to discuss this ahead of time with everybody. I know there was going to be meetings and you were supposed to.
We tried to reach out and then we didn't quite.
No, you didn't.
I think we're still interested in, in meeting with you, certainly.
You did not try to reach out. We tried to meet once and then you canceled the meeting.
All right. Kathy has a comment.
I, I just wanted to, I thought Lonnie had been invited to a group meeting about a month ago, but Lonnie, if you didn't get the invitation, then that was an error on our part. We will make a correction and you're more than welcome to come in anytime.
All right, so why don't we, we did see this in the fall. We offered to move that to this, this meeting, so why don't we leave it on the warrant? But I'd really appreciate if, if you could all have a conversation with Lonnie and, and go through some of this language as, as we move forward before town meeting.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you. Okay. There are motion? There are motion?
I move to sign the May 8 ATM warrant pending town council and town administrator approval.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Continue, aye. Real aye. Thank you. Meeting minutes.
I move to approve the meeting minutes of January 7, 2021, February 16, 2021, and March 2, 2021.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Continue, aye. Real aye. Okay, and then we have considered tent permit fee waiver.
We got an email from Jay last week that says that if we're going to be using a tent for the town meeting, that we should consider waiving the fees. That's a vote by the Board of Selectmen, essentially paying ourselves. So, out of it.
Even though there was a tent permit fee to begin with.
Mark, this is Laura. The motion that I wrote was, is for something else, Kim. I thought you were talking about anybody that had outdoor seating. It was to, to give them a, a fee waiver, so it needs to be changed. It has to be for the tent for town meetings. Sorry about that.
Come, everybody who comes to meeting pays us a fee.
So I would say that we just do a permit, a tent permit waiver for any tents that are needed this year.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Dan?
Yeah, I, I think you should check with my father. I think the school is getting a tent for school purposes, separate from town meeting. I feel like he said that the last time I saw him.
Oh, well, in that case, we're not going to waive. Forget that.
Anyway.
Add it to the override.
Oh, my goodness. Pretty sure that, yeah, hold on.
We'll just do it anyway, I mean.
Whatever, yeah, okay. I'll look it up. Okay.
Just need a motion, right?
So I move to authorize the tent permit waiver for all tents.
Yeah, for the rest of 2021.
For the rest of 2021.
I mean, all in favor?
You get a tent and you get a tent.
Continue, aye. Any other business? Yeah, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Continue, aye. Real aye. Tonight, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Bye, everybody. Nice to see you all.
Bye. See you soon.